...care project. It's basically to repair the culvert north of Woodyer Drive, which has a failing headwall and pipe corrosion. Mr. James.
I'm going to yield some time here to Denise Cruz. This particular culvert has needed repaired for a long time, and we finally got somebody that's willing to do it. Denise, go for it.
That's correct. We actually advertised this project last August and did not receive any bidders. So by that time, we had run out of construction season, and so we pushed it back to this year with some work by LDOT to stabilize the headwall. We opened bids on the 12th, and this legislation will now authorize Service Safety Director to enter into a contract.
And we will be asking for one reading on this tonight, only because we're already into the construction season, and we need to get this done before the end of the year.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding this resolution?
I just have one question. Was it a local? Was it somebody local? Bitter local?
It's Columbus Firm Access Civil Engineering. They did the Mont Hank culvert last year for us.
Okay. We've had them before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You might as well stay right there, Denise.
Anything else on this resolution? Moving on to 78-20. This is a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract amendment for additional construction services. This is for additional general engineering and inspection services for existing construction projects, again, coming through Water, Water Pollution Control. Mr. James.
I will also yield this again to Denise Cruz for comment on this.
All right. Each year, we enter into a general services contract with Hall &amp; Associates, and it covers inspection work on our various projects, but it also covers general engineering if something comes up and we need them. And we've had a lot of that this year. They provide environmental services and wellhead protection reviews for us, which we've had this year. We've also had some sewer issues that we've had Hall come in and take a look at. So we've run out of money or very close to running out of money on the contract with half a year left to go. So we're asking for an amendment to their contract to cover inspection, and hopefully no other issues will occur, and this will do it.
We will ask for one reading on this tonight as well.
And I have Mrs. Teener as your second on this one. I have Mr. Hall on the other one. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Does anybody have any questions for this resolution? Resolution 79-20. This is a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding and declare an emergency for the Zane Alley sanitary sewer repair project and to approve all then and now certificates that may come from this project. This is to waive the competitive bidding requirements and award and not to exceed contract for the repair of Zane Alley behind City Hall, again, through Water, Water Pollution Control. Mr. James.
I will once again yield this to Denise Cruz, but there was a sinkhole that developed behind the city building, and, well, I won't steal Amber Thunder. She's got a couple of other things to add to it. Go ahead.
Ironically enough, we discovered it as we were leaving the Water, Water Pollution Committee meeting last week. There was a sinkhole behind City Hall, and when Mike's crew went out and started investigating, they found a kind of unique setup behind City Hall. There's an old combined sewer overflow chamber, and that made things very difficult to get into the sewer. So the crew went up the hill to the annex and tried to fit the sewer there and found that there were a section of line had collapsed. So we, as an emergency, asked Truco, who was our contractor on the Union Mulberry project and the Fifth, Sixth Forests Rose project, if they could come in and do a repair on it, which they are currently in the process of doing. During construction, we found another collapsed segment. We're working our way down the alley and finding all kinds of interesting things back there, but not the mayor's sanitary sewer lateral. We still haven't found it. So the engineers estimate, when I put it together, was just under $50,000, which is the limit for competitive bidding. Because we're doing this on time and material, and we didn't know what we would be getting into, it would have been very easy for that to tip over $50,000. So we decided to just on the safe side, come in and ask for authorization up to $70,000 for this and to waive competitive bidding and issue a then and now. And I'm going to say on the then and now with the new auditor software, it automatically kicks things over for then and now statements. So you'll see probably in the future, all my legislation will have a then and now just to cover that, so I attach it, and it doesn't get kicked over to Teresa, who then has to process it and kick it back.
Brilliant. Unfortunately, with the age of some of the infrastructure in that area, and hopefully we will be able to find the sanitary sewer connection to the mayor's building, we would not want that to not be found. Anyway, once again, we'll ask for one reading on that tonight as well.
Okay. And I have, Mr. Hall was second on this one.
That's correct.
Does anybody have any questions on this resolution?
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
The next resolution is 80-20. This is a resolution to enter into preliminary legislation for an LPA ODOT LET project agreement for the construction of sidewalks on the east side of Sheridan Drive from Frederick Street to Midill Elementary School. This is part of the Safe Routes to School program, and it's coming through Public Works. Mr. Schoonover.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to have Kirk come up and speak to this, but it's pretty simple. It's just the second half of the sidewalk project on Sheridan Drive.
So we're asking for, this is actually preliminary legislation. When there's, when it's an ODOT LET project, we do, twice we come to council, preliminary and final. This is preliminary. We're a little late in getting it, so we're asking for one reading. We've already started the design. The reason that happened is because this used to be a three-phase project, and we got preliminary legislation on that, I don't know, four, five years ago. So the ODOT folks decided they want us to come back and get preliminary for this specific phase, which is phase two. Phase three, we're going down to Sixth Avenue on Sheridan Drive. This is two parts to this project. It says from Frederick to Midill. The agreement that we are going to enter into has a cap on how much, once we go over that, then the local has to start paying for whatever that is. So from Frederick to Fair, we're going to bid that out as an alternate. In case the bids come high, we can not select the alternate to keep it underneath, so we don't have to use local monies. So hopefully, the bids will come in, and we'll be able to do all the way from Frederick to the Midill Elementary School. That's the goal.
And Corey, I have Mr. James as your second on this.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on this resolution? Okay. Thanks, Kirk. The next resolution is 81-20. It's a resolution to create a new fund for Local Coronavirus Relief Fund and to set up revenue and expense accounts accordingly. This is a requirement, and Auditor Meadows, I believe, mentioned it last meeting that this would be coming. It's coming through Finance. Mrs. Bobbitt, I have you as my second. And we will be asking for suspension on this. Tricia, do you have anything you want to add? It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, it's just pretty straightforward that Hopsville 481 is requiring every entity to set up a new fund to track these monies coming in.
Okay. Any questions on that one? All right. Moving on. Resolution 82-20. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a cooperative services agreement with the Lancaster Port Authority. This resolution is to allow the mayor to execute a cooperative services agreement with the Lancaster Port Authority. This will set forth what the Economic Development Director will be doing for the city through the LPA and redirects the funding the city enterprise departments were paying into the general fund to the LPA for economic development activities, coming through Economic Development. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, I think I'd like to ask the mayor to discuss this for us, so we can have an overview of everything.
Certainly. Mike Pettit has retired from the Gas Department, and he is now an employee of the Lancaster Port Authority and is performing economic development duties for the city through the Lancaster Port Authority. In the past, each of the enterprise departments has paid a fee over to the Port Authority to help reimburse for the activities that he does there. Obviously, the enterprise departments get additional revenue when we have economic developments, so that's the reason behind that. And that's pretty much it. Mike has been on duty here for several months now in Port Authority, and lots of good things going on. Questions?
This is something we've discussed for the last several months in the Economic Development Committee, and it's actually been discussed at council. It seemed like a logical step forward for the Port Authority to assume these duties. Mrs. Downer, would you be the second on that, please?
Sure. And I show two readings. Is that correct?
Yes, two readings.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Resolution 83-20. A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the wastewater fund and to amend the certificate with the county auditor. This resolution is to appropriate funds received as part of a settlement for unpaid truck waste fees, coming through Water, Water Pollution Control. Mr. James.
I'm going to yield this to Mr. Nixon. It seems that this has now been resolved, and I'll let him give you some more detail.
Yes, thank you, sir. This is one of those situations where no good deed goes unpunished. We had a local waste hauler, who will remain nameless at this point, discharge septic waste and other waste to the treatment facility, neglected to pay invoices, always had a story that he was going to make payment, he'd make some partial payments, continue on, and then it just got higher and higher. So we banned him from the facility, tried to work with him to get payment for the undue, for the past due balances. He neglected, I think he signed one agreement, actually. I don't know if you remember that, Randall, but I think the law director's office came up with an agreement. He was supposed to make payments, and he failed to do so. So as a result, we turned this over to our, the same firm who collects delinquencies for the utilities collection office. This has been on the books 10 years or better, so I'm kind of surprised that we collected. So it's kind of nice. He must have, that lien must have shown up for some reason. I'm trying to figure that out now. So this will finally settle this issue up. The fee for collecting this money is what we're paying, and it's 25%. So we did receive a check for $40,000-plus dollars that will go into the wastewater, that already has gone into the wastewater revenue fund. So it'll be nice to finally put this to bed.
Did you mention the original invoice, though?
It was 50, whatever, that's 20, whatever the amount in the legislation is, 25% of the amount.
It was around $53,000.
It was about $53,000, $54,000.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
And approximately $14,000 goes to the legal.
Right.
Expense.
Sure. Which we're happy to get 40 of it back, so we'll take it at this point. I thought it was long gone, so I'm glad we filed the suit, and that kept it on the books. So it allowed us to then collect payment. Couldn't come at a better time.
Yeah, that's true. I have nothing further to add to that.
Okay. I have, Mr. Hall was your second, and are you suspending?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions on this resolution?
Hang on.
You guys should have received a walk-in piece. Can I find it? Yeah, I got it. So this is Resolution 84-20. This is a resolution to cover the next income tax levy that we're going to put on the ballot, and it has to be filed with the Board of Elections by August 4th. Is that right, Randall?
That's correct.
So in order to get, it's exactly the same as the last two that we had, and it's going to be for two readings. And Mr. Stotan, will you be my second, as it is coming through Finance?
I will.
Does anybody have any questions on this resolution?
Just have a quick question, and it's probably my own issue. I know it's not what we mean, but when you read the preamble, I'm probably just dense, but the way I read it, it makes it sound like this levy is to operate, maintain, repair, and provide for capital facilities only. Like, do you think someone would read this and think that the only thing this could be used for is to maintain, operate? I know we mean to operate and maintain as well as repair and provide for capital facilities, right? But do you think people, are we getting confused by that?
Well, what I can say, I've had one individual that actually, and I can understand that reading. The problem with changing it at this stage is, that's the exact language. If you go back and look at our codified ordinances, 183 point, you know, whichever subsection it is or whatever that speaks to it, that's exactly how it's written there. I don't disagree with your statement that, now, that's been that way for years, and we've used it for operation and everything. I don't disagree that to clean up of that language is not a bad idea. It's just unfortunately, we have to go clean up that language within the codified ordinance, and then, so right now, this just reads in line with what the court codified ordinance says, so.
But what it means is, we are going to operate and maintain as well as provide and repair.
Yes. It's basically for all aspects of operation. Yes, correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. Peter Becker.
Yes.
I do have another question. I've asked this before on the one Zoom meeting. How much is this one going to cost to put on the ballot? Because everyone before has cost to put it on. How much is the dollar amount to have this one put on?
This one has been explained to me by the Board of Elections and/or the County Auditor's Office. I'm not, I'm not in control of the cost, nor do I know the cost of these. We share the cost of anything put on the ballot, whether it be my election fund or council's or this, but it's split, the cost of putting this on is split, like it's a presidential year, a state year, any time. We split the cost. I do not know, that would be a Board of Elections question.
Okay, so I, and some probably need to find out, because this is the third one. Have we paid for the other two?
No, as of yet. What they do is take it from our real estate settlements, and the county auditor has yet to do that.
So have we got a dollar amount from, because I thought one was like $13,000.
I think that was the year before for the elections, where we had city council and the other things of that nature on that ballot from last year.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Stotan.
I have a question for Mrs. Teener. I mean, why does it matter?
I just wonder, because, you know, people think you can just put these on, and it's like, well, it costs something to put it on, and it does, you know? And where's it coming from and that?
Those are fair questions. I mean, certainly to try to collect the tax, we certainly have to put that on a ballot or some other way to do it. Secondly, I would think that Auditor Meadows, that you could send a note to somebody at the auditor's office, and they could tell you, you know, not necessarily the last two iterations, but, you know, times prior, they could certainly give us, like when we put the street levy on the ballot, what that cost would have been.
I can have you send an email out to the county auditor's office and see if they've been notified of the last one, previous ones, and see if he has an amount that's already sitting waiting in queue for our second half settlement.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question for Mrs. Teener. She should be able to get an answer to that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding 84-20? Okay. Again, it'll be two readings, and Mr. Stotan will be the second. Any departmental updates? Yes, Mr. Martin.
Yes. A couple of things I'd like to mention. As you well know, we have changed from being part of consortium with health insurance for probably over 20 years. We are on track to have a, I feel like, a very good transition on July the 1st for our employees. Things are looking good. We've got a lot of information out to our employees. And of course, our effort is to try to find ways that we can save costs on a lot of things. Everything that we save helps keep us from raising the health insurance as much as probably with the current company that we're with. So one good thing about this, that any time that, whatever we raise our insurance to, it also benefits the employees. So if we can reduce how much we raise our premiums, it not only helps our general fund, but it also helps our employees, because they pay 15% of that cost. But we're moving forward on that day, and new cards have been issued out, and we look forward to hopefully seeing some savings. It's really difficult to project how much. As you well know, the most important thing on health insurance is the use of the insurance and the experience that people have. We cannot predict the health issues that members of the family or our employees, but we'll keep an eye on it, looking forward to this transition.
Can I ask you a question about that before you move on to your next thing? So what plans did you actually end up with? Because I know last year, we talked about different types of plans available, because I think we had single, and then I think we had family. So did you guys change, were you able to change it up to do like single, and then single plus one, and then family? And then is there a smoking, non-smoking premium difference?
So we only still have single and family. We're in the middle of the year. We have open enrollment, it's the first of the year, so that could be a possibility with us being independent on our own now, self-insured by ourselves, following in similar suit of what the county has done as well. You know, I can't say that there's a smoking, non-smoking feature in there, but we are in the middle of the year. We really can't change our plan. As we transition on July the 1st, everything that our plan is about is going forward, because everybody has already had deductibles and co-pays, and all that moves forward to the new plan that we have. That's all being honored, that's all being tracked. And so when we go into negotiations with really all of our union contracts, I'm sure the health insurance is going to be an important subject during those negotiations, and we'll have to see what we'll do next year. Just to let you know, we've been in a July 1st renewal date. We're doing a year and a half contract with this new one, so we can get on a calendar year, and that will help us in negotiations as well. But we're still with the current plans right now. We really can't change the plan in the middle of the year.
Okay.
But there's going to be a lot of options for us to be totally by ourselves and controlling that and whatever the market is. You know, health insurance has really changed a lot over the 20 years when we first became part of this consortium, and so we're going to be more current with the trends that we have today, and hopefully that will beneficial, benefit us. And I'm open to that. Our HR and I have talked about that. So we're going to look at a lot of options. I'm always very concerned about our employees having benefits. You know, the job market is so tough that we don't have, when we go out to seek for employment, we don't have the people applying like they used to, just because of, you know, your wages issue, the benefits issues and things. But so we're trying to see what we can do for our employees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? The other issue I'd bring up is, you know, as a safety director, I'm always very concerned about our safety forces. We are not at full staff for police and fire, and, you know, maybe I'm speaking to the choir here, but, you know, I hope that you'll move this resolution and ordinance forward to put this on the tax, the election for November, as we desperately need this income tax levy passed eventually. I know it's very difficult. No one wants to pay more income tax. I get that. I think Central Ohio is poised quite well economically speaking, and so there is a great need. Our needs for police and fire are still there, and I'm asking you to move this forward to the election in November. I was very encouraged with the last election. We had more people voted, but, you know, obviously, we gained quite a bit, and we're closer, and I'm hopeful that we can see this passed. So I hope our message goes forward, unified for the city, for the betterment of the city and the future of the city. And I would love to see our numbers not only be what they should be, but this income tax levy would be allow, allow us to have more in our safety forces. And I could talk a long time, and I believe it needs to be that, but that's all I wanted to mention to city council members here tonight.
A hot topic has been the Pierce Avenue bumpy ride. So that was a result of a water main break earlier this year. It was, I guess, a tribute to the pavement, because it was unusual. Typically, we have a blowout of the pavement that lifts the soil out with the water and deposits it's usually on the road. This particular time, the pavement bridged the break, and the ditch over in front of the Upper Hocking Pump Station, there is a huge pile of material, grain, or material that came up under the pavement and discharged to the side of the road. So as a result of that, when we dug our trench, made the fix at the time, we couldn't backfill all of that lost material. We have since replaced the water line. I think when we did our pipe bid, that was one of the projects that was mentioned. So we've got the line replaced. We got it tied into the existing system over there and killed the old line, so hopefully there'll be no more breaks in that area. Last week, we were able to work with LDOT and obtained a quote from Spires Paving to go in, and they'll have Pierce Avenue. I don't know if they made it today or not. They're supposed to start today. It's tied up and didn't make it over that way. They're supposed to start today, have the road closed, do a full width repair, and it's about $50,000 for us to have Spires go in and cut the pavement, replace the base, and bring the pavement back to a smoother surface again. So I know it's been frustrating, the length of time it's taken to get that done, but as trying to work that in with the water department schedule, we've been laying a lot of line in a lot of other places, so we were able to finally get that done last week, and then this week, they are to be in there. And of course, this is the week it's supposed to rain almost all week. So as soon as we can get some good weather, we will get in and get Pierce Avenue taken care of, and hopefully that'll be one less thing on the mayor's Facebook page for people to be unhappy about. We'll find something else for them at that point in time.
You're not expecting it. It kind of wakes you up a little bit.
It does wake you up a little bit. I don't know if you want to drive faster or slower, what the method is. But again, that should be, hopefully that'll be fixed this week, and that will be a subject that we can all put to bed.
Okay, thank you. Any other departmental updates? Okay, thank you. Any other departmental updates?
So, we, just in terms of roadway projects, out on Rock Mill Corporate Park and Mill Park Drive where the new Magna is, I'm pretty excited that we're 99% complete with that project. All the roadways out there paved. We've got our access going into their parking lot off of Mill Park Drive. So, we're real happy to report that that's wrapping up. A separate project that the Ohio Department of Transportation is running is the Signal that will be at Mill Park Drive and 188, and I think that happens later this year. So, they've got some work to do to finish up, but pretty well done with that. Kukozing is doing our 2020 Street Improvement Program with our three mill money this year. They are probably 75% complete. They've done everything but Broad Street, so in a couple of weeks, they're going to come back. They're out there doing concrete work now, and then they'll pave from Main up to Fair, probably in July or August, early August, before school starts. They came in and had a really good bid, and were hungry to get to work, I think, because some of their other projects were not getting going because of the coronavirus. So, that worked out well. We've got Fair Avenue. I've got a pre-construction meeting next week with Shelley Company, who also came in with a fantastic bid. I don't, I can't explain why the bids are so low now. They're not really saying. I think it's just maybe fear of gas tax, gas revenue being down. It's just speculation. They're wanting to get projects on the books. So, we're trying to see what we can do to speed up some of our other projects, that we can bid them now and take advantage of that and get, get these good prices. So, things are moving along. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Tricia?
Just a quick thing. I'm increasing the, I'm changing the account structure since I'm doing the software conversion. Now's the time to kind of expand it a little bit. So, the current account structure you're accustomed to, it's not much, is the three digits for the fund, three digits for the department, and four for the object code. I've just added an extra digit in each one, so I've expanded from four to the fund, four to the department, and five for the object code. It's just thinking ahead for future expansion for accounts, so we're not pigeonholed in at a future date. So, with the system conversion, now is the time to change that and just add that for future account structure. I haven't, I've just kind of left everything the same, but it's just, that's just for future if we need to expand on accounts to sub-departments, something of that nature. So, I just wanted to get you, you'll start seeing legislation that will have, like, a different change, have four, four, and five, rather than what you're used to seeing. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up.
Okay. Thank you. Any other department updates? Okay. Thank you, everybody. President Oul, do you have anything for tonight's meeting prep?
I do not. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to other items for finance. I'm going to change up the agenda a little bit because I have two walk-in ordinances. The first of which is temporary ordinance 13-20, and this is an ordinance that authorizes the mayor to de-parcel, a parcel to, for the former Anchor Hocking Plant Two site located at 911 Lawrence Street, and transfer it to the Lancaster Port Authority. This is coming through, I believe, economic development. Is that correct, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, it is.
Would you kindly provide us some additional information?
Yes, I will. This is the 18.18 acres, part of the former Anchor Hocking Plant One, or I'm sorry, Plant Two site, with an address of 911 Lawrence. Our transit facility is located there. By transferring this to the Port Authority, it will allow them to market and provide the opportunity for econo, I'll just read from the article, economic development. This is an industrial zone parcel, and I believe we have someone looking at it now. I would ask the mayor if he would finish those comments with a little bit more information for us.
Yeah, this, this piece of property is, it's a pollution remediation site, and it is, there can't be any, I guess, excavation deeper than two or two to four feet, something like that on the property. So, it's, it's not super valuable as a site to put anything there. We at one, one time talked to the schools about moving their bus barn there, but they declined after finding all the issues that they would have to deal with in order to make use of that property. But the transit facility is there, which means that it has a rail sighting that flat cars or box cars could be, be detoured into and used to load and unload directly onto the back of the truck. And we also do currently have a company that wants to begin using that. It hasn't been used for a number of years. So, it's, it's an economic development tool for us. If, if it could be disposed of in some way, we would be willing to do that. So, again, that, we have a company that's ready to start using the transit facility for goods that they are bringing in from other parts of the country. So, it just makes sense to have it in the Port Authority as they have more flexibility in what they can do with regard to economic development.
And my other thoughts on this is, it's an opportunity presents itself almost immediately. We're going to ask for suspension on this because of that opportunity, but the proceeds from the sale, other than the $25,000 mentioned in the ordinance that would go to the Port Authority for marketing, et cetera, will come back to the general fund. And I've asked Mr. Stotin to be the second on that legislation, if he would, please.
I would. I have a question. What is the appraised value of that piece of property?
I'm going to work.
I think on the auditor's website, it's like 109,000, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing further.
And are you asking for suspension?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. James?
I do have a question. Of course, I don't know the history behind it. Once we sell the property, do we still own the liability for all the unremediated material that's on it?
I believe that's passed on to the new owner. Is that correct?
We do not. In actuality, so what you have is, you've got some zones in there, and what makes it difficult for development is, as the mayor said, there's some areas where you could go down deeper in four feet, but I think people are in hazmat suits or whatever if they do that. So, what we did is, we cleaned up the site. We have a covenant not to sue there from the Ohio EPA, basically, that, if you will, in essence, takes away, if the operation and maintenance plan is followed, if somebody goes in there and does any type of construction, if they follow that operation and maintenance plan that's filed with that covenant not to sue, then they're free from any liability as well. You know, they get a clean bill of health, if you will, even though it's not a completely clean bill of health for the property. But they're saying, if you go in there and you, you know, you leave the soil, you don't remove the soil, take it anywhere else, and you follow all those conditions, and then, of course, yearly, you have to document that to the Ohio EPA to keep that covenant not to sue in place, then the liability, if you will, the past liability for any contamination of the land, you are protected from. So, when, when it's passed on and needed to someone else, that, that, those benefits and liabilities, if you will, pass on to the, to the new owner of the property.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this ordinance? Oh, yes. Sorry, Becky. I have to turn this way. Everybody's down here. I have to turn to the left.
So, okay, so this is a walk-in piece. Did we get emails on this or anything? Did I miss something, or is this something we're just getting tonight? Just asking.
It is a walk-in piece. You're getting it tonight.
So, and we're going to suspend. How soon is it this place is supposed to come in and occupy to do whatever they're going to do?
I believe they're looking at an immediate opportunity to proceed. They have product. They want to transfer it via rail. They want to use this site. And my understanding is, they don't plan any buildings at this particular point in time. They plan on bringing their products sitting in on the property and then transferring at some point, possibly by rail or by truck. It gives them a opportunity to expand their business and store some of their product that is being produced in Lancaster until they have buyers and can use the railroad to transfer this to the buyer. Is that pretty much correct, Mayor?
They have, they already have shipments en route to Lancaster to use that facility.
Oh, before we've approved it? Okay.
Well, the transit facility's already been there. I mean, it's been there for many years. It just hasn't, it just hasn't had a user, and there is a fee for using it that would be lovely.
I just, I mean, you know, kind of like, I just...
And this doesn't, this is, is the very beginning part. This is just transferring the deed from the city to the Port Authority to then start the process of, of marketing, you know, and selling it or whatever, so.
So, either way, we would get a fee if they used it, correct?
Right.
Or we would get a larger amount if we sell it?
Correct.
Okay.
And it removes the liability from us of basically having a brownfield site, you know. It wouldn't be in the city or the ports, hopefully. Not in the cities with this, with this legislation, but hopefully, not in the ports' ownership for a long period of time either, so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. James?
Do you have any idea what contaminants are on that site that are much of an issue?
I can shoot you the report. I don't remember.
Arsenic is going to be one of them.
What it is. Yes, arsenic, definitely, or whatever. But, yeah, I can shoot, send you, anybody that wants to.
Remember, it was remediated. Well, you know, even though there is still some things down below there.
Whenever they tell you you can't go between below two to four feet, there's some stuff still there.
Yes, correct. But, yeah, I can send that to you.
Would you please?
Yes.
Yes.
Just real quickly, in terms of the materials that are going to be on this site, there isn't any evidence or any concern that at some point that this business would be bringing in contaminated material or other issues that might contribute to the degree of contamination that's already on the site.
So, they're, they're bringing in shipping containers on flat cars that will be unloaded onto a truck and then transported to their site.
So, empty shipping containers?
Yes. This is, this is a major economic development situation for the city of Lancaster. This company has a contract to build hospital, portable hospital units out of containers, and I believe, I don't, I don't know how much this information is extremely confidential, but they have a contract to produce a number of these units for international, they've already sold them internationally. So, they'd be bringing them in, converting them to portable hospitals, putting them back on a flat car later, shipping them out to a seaport somewhere.
Okay. Any other questions on 13-20? Okay. All right. The next walk-in resolution is, or, resolution, ordinance is 14-20. This is the corresponding ordinance that goes with the walk-in resolution for the income tax levy. And this ordinance cannot be passed until after the election, correct? So, we would read it and then place it on the table?
Yes, you can do two readings. The next, do a reading introduction tonight, and a reading on the 13th, and it just tabled.
Okay, all right. And, Mr. Stotin, would you also be my second?
I will.
Okay. All right. The only other thing I had was city revenue update. Do we have one?
Nothing new since the last meeting. Because we haven't passed in another month, we did get some positive news about the CARES Act funds that are coming through. We, in the past, have not believed that we were eligible to use any of that money as reimbursement because of the stipulation that any expenditures had to be in excess of approved budget. The guidance on that has changed to not accounted for in the approved budget. And since no city accounted for COVID-related expenses when they passed our budget last year, none of the COVID expenses were accounted for in the budget. So, it is now the interpretation of the state auditor and the Office of Budget and Management that it can be used to reimburse for COVID-related expenses, of which we have those. So, the money, House Bill 481 passed. The governor signed it, and we passed a resolution at the last meeting that was required by House Bill 481 to accept that money. It now comes to the county, and the county will distribute it to the various municipalities based on local government funds. We believe our share is $987,000, give or take a few thousand. We certainly will not be able to use anything close to all that, but at least there are funds here that we can get any expenses that we had reimbursed. So, any, any money coming is good news.
Yes, Mr. Stotin?
So, Mayor Scheffler, I, I mean, are we still hopeful that once the United States Congress comes back in session, that they'll take up, you know, what Congressman Stivers has indicated, that basically broadens the use even further for the CARES money? That would give us an opportunity to potentially use, you know, part of our share for, you know, loss of revenues associated with it.
There has been no change, and I hope the House is supposed to come back into session on June 30th. Congressman Stivers indicated to me that deeply that was going to happen. I know there have been many discussions with Senator Brown, Senator Portman about the same objective. And I've, I've seen nothing that believe me that way that is going to happen.
It is or isn't?
I believe it is going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the mayor on city revenue? Okay, is there anything else to come before finance? Seeing nothing? Nothing. Seeing nothing, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I have 6:49 PM.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council begins at 6:55.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner... owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at seven four zero six five four two eight four eight for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at ten thirty-one North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Cremonetory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven four zero six five three zero six five two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, four oh five North Columbus Street in Lancaster and two oh seven South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Lord, we remain thankful for this day and your blessings, thankful for all that you do and how you continue to lead, guide, and direct us. Be with us tonight in the work that's set before us. May we continue to do what is in the best interests of the city of Lancaster and its citizens. We ask for continued protection of safety forces, the men and women here and abroad who are fighting to protect, preserve, and defend our freedom. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotin?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the reading of the meeting minutes dated June eighth, twenty twenty.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty regarding cancellation of the Economic Development Meeting submitted by Mr. McDaniel. Email dated June eleventh, twenty twenty regarding Public Works Committee Agenda submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Email dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty regarding Monday night's meeting submitted by President Paul. And finally, an email dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty regarding Finance Committee Meeting Agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one. I received a notice of an appeal against the City of Lancaster Board of Zoning Appeals, received on June eleventh, twenty twenty, submitted by Attorney Bruce Broyles.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any special presentations or awards?
There is nothing for this evening.
Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time in Lancaster City Council, we set time aside for the voters and taxpayers of the city to address city council. I do not see any present, and therefore, we will move ahead. There are some members of the administration here. We welcome you, um, unless anyone wants to speak during this time. I see heads shaking, no, so we'll move ahead. Reports of standing committees?
I have two. Finance Committee Minutes for June eighth, twenty twenty submitted by Mrs. Downhour, and the Water Water Pollution Control Minutes for June tenth, twenty twenty submitted by Mr. James.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Other reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We do have a public hearing tonight on temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty. We will now open up that public hearing. In a moment, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the preamble. I'll then toss it to the sponsor of that legislation to provide any opening comments. Again, we have no members of the public here. We will likely then move very quickly through proponents and opponents, and then come back for closing comments. With that, Clerk Sandy, will you please read the preamble?
It is a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one tax budget of the city of Lancaster for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and submitting same to the Fairfield County Auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour.
Mrs. Downhour, opening comments?
Uh, this is, I believe, an annual thing we are required to do, and it is required that we do a public hearing, so here we are.
I'm appalled and floored that there's no one here to talk about. I just can't believe there's no one here.
This is government at its finest, isn't it?
I'll tell you what. All right, any discuss, well, we have no, again, we have no public here to comment, and so all of that up to members of council briefly. We can also discuss as the legislation comes up this evening, anyone wish to make comments? If not, any closing comments, Ms. Downhour?
No, we'll address it during regular reading of the resolutions.
Very good, thank you very much. We will then close the public hearing on temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty. We'll now move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the second reading of temporary resolution seventy-one dash twenty.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriation with the county auditor and the general fund one oh one, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, excuse me, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
Uh, second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution seventy-one dash twenty. Temporary resolution seventy-three dash twenty.
A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Lancaster's fiscal year FY twenty twenty, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Statement of Objectives and Amendments, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel?
This will be the second of three readings.
Second reading on temporary resolution seventy-three dash twenty. Temp, temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty.
A resolution adopting the, the twenty twenty-one tax budget of the city of Lancaster for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and submitting same to the Fairfield County Auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
I was conferring with the law director on something, my apologies. I asked what happens if I don't sign this legislation? Apparently, nothing, so.
See how important you are?
Yeah, I can tell, yeah. Real confidence builder there. Uh, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporarily numbered seventy-four dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the third reading, and, I don't know, I don't even wanna do it. I'm just kidding. Oh, we have a motion and a second to suspend the third reading on temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty. Ms. Downhour? Discussion?
No.
Any further discussion or discussion at all? The motion to suspend, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered seventy-four dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Um, just if, um, Auditor Nettles would be kind enough to reiterate what it is we're doing, so everybody's clear, we have to do this, we don't really have a choice, yada, 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 yada.
This is part of the ORC that establishes the, uh, county tax, tax budget for all government entities within Fairfield County, um, and it's mandatory that we turn, complete this and turn it in by the first of July to the County Budget Commission, um, in which I will end up having a tax budget hearing, and they will tell us what our real estate taxes for the following year, twenty twenty-one, will be, and our local government, which are already pre-decided, um, by a percentage that doesn't change, so. Sorry?
Anything further?
No.
Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, just for the record, that we did have a public hearing and, uh, no pro or con from, uh, any, uh, any of the residents. Just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Other comments on this piece of legislation?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Uh, just, just real quickly, I'm wondering, is there a way that we could expedite the preparation of this document? Obviously, the biggest burden here is with, uh, Tricia's office. Is there a way that we could potentially, um, estimate second half revenues, or present our calendar budget in such a way that would make it less burdensome to your office than what it currently is?
A lot of the departments on some fashion use this as their test run for the mayor's budget when they push it through. Um, so what they give me, I rely on the departments to give me their best guess for their best estimates when it comes through, so, um, and a lot of that is manual labor, so I'm hopeful, as I'm learning my new system, that maybe I can get some of the stuff out of the new system i- in better fashion, but I'm not counting on it, but I'm, I'm hopeful. So I'm not sure everybody is doing the same thing like you're asking and giving their best estimates, it's just getting that, all that information compiled.
Thank you.
Further comments on this particular legislation? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy-four dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution seventy-five dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the adoption of a revised investment policy of public funds for the city of Lancaster, Ohio, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution seventy-five dash twenty. We now move to the first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution seventy-seven dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the Memorial Drive Culvert Repair Project, offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Uh, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive this, waive the second and third readings of rev, resolution temporarily numbered seventy-seven dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution seventy-seven dash twenty. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Mr. James?
Uh, we'll wait until we get ready to pass.
Okay, any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered seventy-seven dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution seventy-seven dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. James?
Yes, I'll yield some time to Ms. Denise Cruz, but this is one of those projects that's been on the books and needed for a while, but I'll let her go ahead and give you a little more detail.
Ms. Cruz?
Thank you. Um, this project has been on the books for a while. We, uh, actually bid the project last year and received no bidders. Um, it was too late in the construction season to rebid last year, so we rebid the spring open bids on the twelfth and received two bids. Um, and the low bidder was under the engineer's estimate, so we're really happy with that. Um, and this will allow us to enter into the contract and get the culvert repaired before winter.
Very good, thank you very much. Further discussion, Mr. James?
Uh, one other comment. This is a approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollar project, is that correct?
We're asking for a hundred and seventy thousand. That will cover contingencies, um, because we're working at Memorial Drive, and I like to budget for big things, so in, in case we run into an issue, there's, um, contingency money there. Um, but the bid was actually a hundred and forty-one thousand.
Further discussion?
I have no further discussion.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy-seven dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution seventy-eight dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract amendment for additional construction services offered by Mr. James, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution numbered seventy-eight dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution seventy-eight dash twenty. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Mr. James?
Uh, we'll wait for the, uh, motion to pass.
Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. James?
Uh, would like to yield some time to Denise Cruz to explain, uh, somewhat more about this particular, uh, agreement.
Thank you. Um, each year, we enter into a general service agreement, um, for engineering and inspection work, um, and the amount of work depends on the number of projects and, and what we have going on. Um, this year, because of the number of construction projects we have, because of some construction projects that came up that we didn't anticipate, and because of some environmental, um, reviews that we needed done related to the wallhead protection ordinance, um, I've run out of money on this contract. So this, I hope, will see us through the rest of the year, um, unless we, again, find something that comes up. Um, so this would be an engineering amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Mr. James, what's your pleasure?
Um, and this is the Holland Associates?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, no further discussion at this time.
And what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered seventy-eight dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution seventy-eight dash twenty. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No, not at this time.
Discussion around the room?
I just have one question to Denise. I'm sorry that you have to get back up. Denise, I mean, we've had them working all year, right?
That's correct.
I mean, a- and this is, because the money's ran out on the other contract, and now, now we're getting this one, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make certain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt, thank you, Ms. Cruz. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy-eight dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution seventy-nine dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding and declare an emergency for the Zane, Zane Alley Sanitary Sewer Repair Project and to approve all then announced certificates that may come from this project, offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution numbered seventy-nine dash twenty.
Second?
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council place, or excuse me, uh, council make them, uh, pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution number seventy-nine dash twenty.
Mr. Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution seventy-nine dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. James?
Um, before I yield to Ms. Cruz to her details, this was something that, uh, at the end of our meeting on June tenth for the Water and Water Pollution Committee, uh, no one fortunately fell into the sinkhole that developed behind the city building, and now we're in the process of trying to make those repairs. Denise, if you would like to add, please.
I'll try and keep the story short, um, so we, we found a sinkhole as we were investigating, we found a couple collapsed sewer sections, uh, the sewer in Zane Alley is over a hundred years old, um, and we just, we couldn't close, uh, we, we couldn't wait, uh, we asked Truco Construction, who's currently in town doing our two major, um, storm sewer projects, if they could come in and make the repair, they started last week, um, and they should be done this week, um, and, um, so it, it was an emergency situation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cruz. Mr. James?
Uh, and I would like to add at this time that, uh, we were fortunate that Truco Construction had all their equipment already mobilized to site, were able to then find enough resources to help us through this project on a, in a timely manner, so, uh, that's all the discussion I have.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy-nine dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution eighty dash twenty.
A resolution to enter into preliminary legislations for an LPA ODOT LET project agreement for the construction of sidewalk on the east side of Sheridan Drive from Frederick Street to Midill Elementary School, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution eighty dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution eighty dash twenty. Mr. Schoonover?
No comment at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution eighty dash twenty.
Mr. James?
Second?
Thank you, temporary, we have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution eighty dash twenty. Mr. Schoonover?
Uh, yeah, this is the, had the first piece, uh, that includes the design phase, um, to get this project started on the sidewalks as part of the safe, safe, uh, what is that? Safe roads? Safe routes to school, I was going to say roads. Safe routes to school project, uh, similar to what you s- have seen from Midill to Tiki, um, previously, so, pretty exciting about that, because there are a lot of people that walk down Sheridan Drive, and this being, um, a project that's not going to require, um, any local funds, um, this first piece will get us started on that project.
Excellent. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution eighty dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty.
A resolution to create a new fund for local coronavirus relief fund, two oh five oh, and to set up revenue and expense accounts, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Not on the suspension, no.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, uh, this resolution is, uh, a requirement from House Bill four eighty-one, uh, it is so that we can, uh, receive and, uh, expense out monies received from the CARES Act, and, uh, it is a necessity, which is why we're asking for suspension.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution eighty-one dash twenty passes nine to zero.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a co- uh, cooperative service agreement with the Lancaster Port Authority, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel? First of two readings. First of two readings on temporary resolution eighty-two dash twenty. Temporary resolution eighty-three dash twenty.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the wastewater fund six zero zero four, and to amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution number eighty-three dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution eighty-three dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. James?
Uh, we'll wait until they pass.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Uh, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution number eighty-three dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution eighty-three dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. James?
Basically, this is an unpaid balance of a, um, amount of money that was owed to our, uh, waste treatment facility by a contractor who kept using the facility and did not pay, and this dates clear back into twenty-ten, and we finally received a, uh, amount of money, fifty-three thousand dollars approximately, uh, twenty-five percent of which is now owed to the law firm that helped us make this collection.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution eighty-three dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution eighty-four dash twenty.
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend section one eighty-three point zero one two, one eighty-three point zero one three, and one eighty-three point zero two, of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to provide for the levy of a forty-five hundredth of one percent, zero point four five percent, tax effective January first, twenty-twenty-one, and continuing thereafter on the salaries, wages, commissions, and other compensation subject to the municipal income tax, with all such tax to be issued for the purpose of operating, maintaining, and repairing, and providing capital facilities for the fire and police department of the city, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
Mrs. Downhour?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution eighty-four dash twenty. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the first reading of temporary ordinance thirteen dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to deed parcel number zero five three five eight eight three seven zero zero, consisting of eighteen point eighteen plus minus acres of the former Anchor Hocking Plant Two, site located at nine eleven Lawrence Street, Lancaster, Fairfield County, Ohio, to the Lancaster Port Authority to execute any and all documents necessary for the transfer and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered thirteen dash twenty.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered thirteen dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the wr- written record ordinance temporarily numbered thirteen dash twenty.
Second?